All right. Good evening, folks. It is 7:04 PM. And I hereby call to order the October 2019 Meeting of the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees. Would you please join me in rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We are missing trustee Cole this evening, who is under the weather, and we wish her a quick recovery. And we'll miss her tonight. We will begin with a village clerk's report. Clerk Bruno, please.
Two payrolls were processed. Deputy clerk Laura Gale is planning his own secretary. She's been quite busy. So many projects going on. I'm going to need to do some search requests and so forth. 285 trash bags were sold. And coming up Monday, November 11th, the office will close in about seven, something like that.
Thank you, clerk Bruno. Can everyone survive if we turn off that space heater for a quick meeting? It's a little rattly, but thank you for running that and trying to bring up the ambient temperature while the boiler's being repaired until tomorrow morning. Thank you. Trustees, we have many sets of minutes. September 11th workshop, September 18 public hearing, that was on the CDPG, September 18 regular meeting, and October 9 workshop minutes. You've had a chance to review these. So is there a motion to approve all sets of minutes?
It's moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to treasurer's report. Okay, this month, out of the general fund, 1,100, excuse me, Out of the water fund, $6,420.66. Out of sewer, $613.11. And out of the expendable trust, $462, which are the daffodil bulbs that we'll be planting soon. And that's a grand total of $125,282.97. Is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Uh huh.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to pay the bills?
Uh huh.
Second?
Second.
That was Major followed by Azaradi. Any discussion? I just want to thank clerk Bruno for getting a few vouchers in even as late as this morning. Appreciate that very much, so that our vendors don't have to wait a whole month to get their money. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bills will be paid. Moving on to the zoning report, please. Trustee Azaradi.
I did not see a someone right here.
Ah, perhaps we did not receive one from our... Okay.
I communicated with him today, but he didn't hear me.
All right, we'll be back with that next month for sure, so thank you. Now is when we'd like to open it up for public comment on agenda items. Gentlemen, you've had copies of the agenda. Election Day, election inspectors, Human Rights Day, public hearing on Clay Hill Road, stop signs, and health insurance renewals. It's all housekeeping this month. And I will note...
Accept the court's vote.
Yes, that is partly housekeeping. And at this time, clerk Bruno, it was decided during the workshop, we're going to add an agenda item, which is a motion to set a special meeting of the board for October 31st, 4:30, which happens to be Halloween. We may or may not show up in costume. But we have some work related to getting that new fire truck that can't wait till next month. So we've got our special meeting in place.
You did the 31st?
Yeah.
4:30.
4:30. All right. So hearing no public comment on agenda items. We'll jump right into it. All right, so first we have a resolution establishing Election Day. Village elections Wednesday, March 18th, 2020. Okay, is there a motion to move this resolution?
So moved.
All right, that was Azaradi, and I think the second's going to go to Schneider. Any discussion? So village elections, we have two trustees up this March. And we'll see, the elections will probably be upstairs. I don't think we'll have our firehouse ready by then. Yeah?
I can't hardly use my...
Yes. But we will notify you where they're going to be before then. And as always, come out and exercise your right to vote. Local government is where you have the greatest influence as a citizen. And even as is often the case, if these next races are uncontested, in my opinion, having served, it's all the more reason to come out and vote. You may not have a choice of candidates, but it's very important to establish what I always think of as that little contract with your elected representatives. Hey, I came out and voted for you. And when I catch you on the street and have an issue, you should listen to me because I showed up for you, and therefore you should show up for me. It does make a difference to us who serve.
It does.
Even in an uncontested election. Do a roll call vote on that. Deputy mayor, major?
Aye.
Trustee Azaradi?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Village election day, Wednesday, March 18th, 2020. Election inspectors. We have Judy Scott and Cindy Hakunda again. We appreciate them serving. We have an alternate, Jackie Zatko. And these are, again, for the village elections in March. Is that correct, Rob?
Yeah, we chose them for the chocolate bars that they put on.
Correct.
All the chocolate.
It's only an international election, yeah?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah.
We love them for...
You have a chocolate village elections. All right, is there a motion to establish these election inspectors? Is there a second?
Second.
That was Major followed by Azaradi. Any discussion? As always, thank you to these individuals who sit there all day for $10 an hour. We appreciate them very much. Deputy mayor, major?
Aye.
Trustee Azaradi?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Moving on to the non-housekeeping resolution of the evening. And I would like to ask our deputy mayor to perhaps introduce this one a little bit, and then I'll ask for motions and votes.
You want to introduce by talking about it?
Talk about it.
All right, well...
We can read it.
Well, this past weekend was so wonderful. In celebrating Eleanor Roosevelt and the 70th anniversary of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, we had such an amazing time and an amazing turnout and...
A hundred people in the village hall on Friday night.
Yep, and what, probably more than that, the ribbon cutting.
Saturday morning.
On Saturday, so I would invite everyone to please go up to Woods Road there, 39 Woods Road, next to St. Paul's and Trinity Parish, and check out this nice site of reflection that we now have forever and ever. And also, up on the third floor of the village hall, we have two exhibits related to this. We have an exhibit put together by Helene Teager, the archivist at Bard College, who pulled some amazing stuff out of the collection there. And then also, an exhibit that's on loan from the Roosevelt House Public Policy Institute that's all about the Universal Declaration. So it was such an incredible experience, like the planning of this and just sort of the outpouring of, I don't know, sort of love for ER.
Yes.
And to find that so many people here have either their own recollections of her or their parents' recollections, or some sort of connection, you know, whether it's somebody saying that Eleanor had picked up their brother hitchhiking on 9G or had gotten their father a job. Or, you know, they'd shaken her hand at the Red Church in 1957. So just so many things. And, you know, we had amazing speakers, not only about Eleanor, but about her commitment to human rights and then human rights now and where we're at. And so it seemed like we should really keep this going. So that's what this resolution is all about.
And I loved the little details, like the fact that the bust of Eleanor stands five feet, 11 inches, which was her height. And when you're standing next to it, you say, whoa. She was a tall lady.
And when you visit the installation over there on Woods Road, you'll see the nice big pavers. Those were repurposed from the bluestone sidewalk, which is buried under some loam there on Woods Road. And the plinth was made out of the stones from the parapets of the old bridge that we kept when the county redid that. So not only were we thrifty, but those stones are, you know... If you've done 87 years duty as a stone on the Tivoli Bridge, you're not done. Now you're going to go be in the plinth for Eleanor for who knows how much longer. So that was sweet. It was thrifty. And it was also, you know, working with what we had that's already got some history in it. So, you know, it was only November 15th last year, 2018, that I got an email from a gentleman offering Tivoli a bronze bust. And in 11 quick months, we got this thing all done. We had a lot of help from our friends at the St. Paul and Trinity Parish, as well as the Episcopal Diocese of New York. We had a great little citizen community we were able to recognize and thank all those people over the weekend. So we have this nice spot for reflection. We have a bronze and stone monument. And we had a wonderful weekend of events. But what we thought was best is if we just sort of use that as year one and we keep this up. So we're going to establish Eleanor Roosevelt Human Rights Day in the village of Tivoli. And this will be her birthday being October 11th. She was 135 Friday last. The nearest Saturday to October 11th every year in Tivoli is going to be Eleanor Roosevelt Human Rights Day. And we expect that we may convene over there, if it's a beautiful sunny October day like it was last weekend. Or in addition to or in lieu of that, we'll be here in village hall, continuing to talk about her history and probably more importantly, and more so, human rights historically and currently. And I think that's what everyone was continuing to say throughout the weekend is these things were established, you know, 70 years ago, and it's as current as anything else. There are people all over the world who aren't getting treated the way they ought to by their fellow humans. I mean, this is something we all have to choose to do together. Tivoli's going to be a part of that, small though. We may be, we have a voice larger than our size perhaps, and we're going to use it every year. So with that said, we want to establish Eleanor Roosevelt Human Rights Day in the village of Tivoli. I don't think we'll read all the whereases, but essentially, she spent a bunch of time here as a kid. She loved it here. It was her favorite place in her childhood that she spent time. As we all have known, she helped push us over the line in getting us our water and sewer in the '30s. And obviously, her singular contribution to the Universal Declaration of Human Rights makes her further significant and further someone that we should be proud to call Tivolians. So we'll do that every year. Is there a motion to establish Eleanor Roosevelt Human Rights Day in the village of Tivoli?
Oh, heck yeah.
Let me translate that. That's an aye?
That's a hard yes.
That's a hard yes. And our second from trustee Azaradi. Any further discussion? Deputy mayor, major?
Aye.
Trustee Azaradi?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
I also vote aye. And I certainly hope, if someone's watching who in 10 years is on this board or in my chair, that you keep this thing up and you keep doing it after your current crowd has moved on. We want this to last longer than us, for sure. All right, see you in an early Saturday next October. Hello, Mike. Next, we have Resolution establishing a date for a public hearing regarding the adoption of proposed local law C of 2019, a local law regarding stops at Clay Hill Road and Boyd Hill Lane. I, the village board, have received concerns from residents in the Clay Hill Road, Boyd Hill Road area. There's more activity out there, like everywhere in the village. We've got some new residents. We've got some kids. There's some one-year-old Tivolians who are currently in their strollers, moving through that intersection. And people have informed us that particularly for motorists, it's not clear who's got the right of way. Maybe it's not as safe as it needs to be. We had our village engineer Crawford and Associates do a review. They're recommending to us that we put in a three-way stop at that intersection. Seems to us that's a good idea. That should address the concerns with residents. That requires a local law. All local laws require a public hearing. And we would like to set that public hearing for our next workshop, November 13th, 7:00 PM here in this room. The law will be available for people to take a look at, and I can tell you, it's very short. The intersection of Clay Hill Road and Boyd Hill Lane is hereby designated a three-way stop. Stop signs will be erected at the following points. Clay Hill Road from the east, Clay Hill Road from the north, Boyd Hill Lane from the south. So that is the extent of the law. One of our shorter laws, I would say. So is there a motion to establish the public hearing on local law C for November 13th, 7:00 PM?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? We hope that all people in favor or opposed to the legislation will come and be heard. Deputy mayor, major?
Aye.
Trustee Azaradi?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. See you on the 13th for that public hearing. And back to housekeeping. Every year, we have to renew the health insurance plan. We've shopped around. I want to thank trustee Schneider and trustee Azaradi. Did you work on this one?
I was at the meeting.
Yes, very good. Then you did as well. Thank you both. We've decided the best value and also complying with our restrictions under the union contract is to renew the same plan we've had last year. That's the MVP Silver III HD EPO. And how much is this going up? 10%?
10%.
10%. So we have seen 10% little municipality like Tivoli, 10% increase in health insurance every year. I hope that someone in this country, we're happy to help, can straighten this out. You know, it's a big conversation nationally, health insurance. And when they're talking about it on the debate stage, it's often about individuals and families. But the impacts to our municipalities, large and small, are crushing. Especially if we're in a place like Tivoli, where we've got New York State tax cap, which we've managed to stay under every year. These health insurance increases almost eat all that up. It's really tough. And how much longer can this go on? But for this year, we're going to renew the MVP Silver III HD EPO. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So let's notify that we're going to renew with the firm MVP. And lastly, motion to set a special meeting for Halloween, 10:31 here at 4:30 PM. That was moved by the deputy mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
That was trustee Schneider. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next board meeting will be held Wednesday, November 20th, 2019 at 7:00 PM, preceded by a workshop at 6:00 PM here at the historic Washtepaister Hall. We have a regular workshop and public hearing on November 13th at 7:00 PM. Moving on to committee reports. Trustee Azaradi?
Well, first of all, I must compliment Emily for three days of activities, which were just phenomenal this last weekend. Both for their sort of moving content and just for the fun that took place as we had people... We discovered people in Tivoli that I never knew were here because we had something new and different to talk about. It was really fabulous. And secondly, I must thank people for street painting. I know it's done and gone, but the people who helped to make it happen need deserve to be noted. We had 13 donors this year. I always have to mention John Ludich. And John came this year, and we have a picture of him painting bricks all along. He was our lead donor. The Corner also gives us a great deal of money. And then we have Trog Haven, Osaka, Santa Fe, Tivoli Wine, Tivoli Mercantile, Gary DeMaro Real Estate, all of these people who give a range of gifts. And some special individuals, Marty Clark, Pamela Marian, old board members, Barry Cogan and Tom Cordier. So they're all important. And I must mention Mikey, the baker, because he feeds all of the volunteers in the mornings. Everybody has breakfast. The workers, and I'm going to make a little much of this, but I had four people there on a Saturday morning. Mike Carl, our friend Pete Walsh, and the bakers, who helped to, you know, put this temperate paint together. And then all of the paint sinks to the bottom when the water's at the top. So you've got to use a drill to get it mixed so that you can actually paint with it. They did that part, and they hauled it out to the street. This all happens in about 45 minutes, and nobody knows what's going on. But these people do a lot of work. And of course, we had our town supervisor, Robert McKinnon, who does the words down the center. Chris Mann, Bill Hamel, John Schmidt. Generally, there had been, we had Tom Mansfield and Bill Hamel, newly running. Emily was there, and Angela was there. So that board was equally well represented. The mayor was a little late.
Sorry?
He was coming back from Russia. Anyway.
I would have drawn very well had I made it. It would have been a stick figure, for sure.
And a special thank you to the ladies who helped with registration. We have a very smooth registration process now, because it's all done online. And still, at 8 o'clock in the morning, there are people there anxiously hoping that they will get exactly this where that they want. And there is some negotiation that sometimes has to take place. And Felicia Kiesing is just wonderful. She keeps that smile on her face. And she's very gracious, and she understands problems. Laura Gale Tyler had her first taste of this. She wasn't sure she was necessary, but she was good backup. And my daughter Isabel and a friend Rita are also there. Then I have to thank Joe Tobin, who, all I have to do is give him the date, and he sets up the music. It was relatively easy this time because it was actually a good date that we planned. Beautiful sunny day. Sometimes we have to change that date three times, and he has to find replacement musicians. But he didn't have to this time. And Andy Wainwright, you will soon see, did some really fabulous paintings. There's one of Sabra Chen Canelli, who does her usual crow with Robert McKinnon in the background and the eyeball lens, so that you see that. I love Tivoli and her painting. All of them was fabulous. So thank you all for being there and for making it happen.
And put around applause for trustee Azaradi for leading street painting. All right. Trustee Schneider, please.
Sure. In contrast, it's going to be really, really short, to the point. The village of Tivoli Justice Court report for the month of September. Total charges received were 28. Charges disposed were 12. And $968 was collected and remitted to the state control. Nice. I told you it was going to be fast, right?
Thank you, trustee Schneider. Deputy mayor, major?
Okay, I'm going to just say a couple of quick thank you's, and then I will be publishing the list of all the thank you's for the weekend because it's huge. There were so many people without whom this could not have happened. And I would say, Tivoli Library, the American Legion, the fire company, everybody who helped with parking cars, directing traffic. Judy Scott in particular for playing the piano and making the opening reception super classy. All of the speakers, both Friday and Saturday. Father of Sood, St. Paul's and Trinity Parish, and the diocese. And the thing we didn't mention is that there is a movement afoot to put Eleanor Roosevelt on the list of, basically, if the Episcopal Church had saints, she needs to be the people, right? So there's a movement going to get her on that list.
Okay, we should also mention that the mayor gave an awesome introduction.
Yeah, keep an eye on YouTube for that. It was amazing.
Thank you.
And another shout out to Mikey over at Tivoli Bread and Baking because he made and donated some lemon squares for midway through the afternoon on Saturday. And, you know, we had this panel of serious human rights people who got totally sidetracked talking about the lemon squares.
Yeah, and the recipe.
And the recipe. And that is not a long, you know, hop from like human trafficking to shortbread crust. So thank you, as always, Mikey. Next thing coming up is community potluck supper this Friday night. Third floor again, between 6:00 and 8:00. And this is, I think, our sixth. We do two a year, one in the fall, one in the spring. And it's terrific. We partner up with the Bard Center for Civic Engagement. And we've got, anybody who was there last time knows that there was a band that played that were just terrific, and they're going to be playing again. So it's a great opportunity to come out and commune with your community and, you know, eat some things.
And bring something yourself, right?
Right.
Bring a dish back.
Bring a dish to share. That's the potluck part of it. That's the problem.
Sometimes you guys spell that out.
Right.
Right. Reminder.
And also, there's a cool talk going on in the library from 6:00 to 7:00, which is a history of Halloween, haunted history of Halloween. So you might want to, like, maybe come and eat something fast, and then go down and check that out, and then come back up for dessert, or, you know, whatever. I feel like I'm hitting both. Claremont is doing their ghostly tours again on the weekends, so just go to the FriendsOfClaremont.org website and check that out. And the next thing going on down at Historic Red Hook is the Chocolate Festival. Going on in Red Hook, but the Elmen Dorf is having an open house from 12:00 to 4:00. And the county historian will be making some chocolate treats there in the kitchen. And maybe there is some movement on the canoe launch because that was slated to perhaps begin, fingers crossed, right around Columbus Day. So I'll be heading down into the bays tomorrow to check it out. If there's anything, I will blast it.
All right. Thank you, deputy mayor, major.
The news, I will blast the news.
Not blast the new structure, the just...
Not blast the new, no. No, I'm totally in support of the new structure, to be fair.
I want to get everyone thinking about winter too early, but we're not meeting again here. We're meeting until November 20th, and we will be five days into our winter parking ordinance. So I always like to remind folks that's coming up. It's November 15th through April 1st. It is a winter parking ordinance. It is not technically a snow ordinance. It doesn't matter if there's snow coming, snow there, snow not there. Between November 15th and April 1st, you cannot park on the public roads. So in case there is a storm event, we can get it cleared up and...
And when do you...
And when do you have to be on?
Bless you. 1:00 AM to 6:00 AM. Those tickets are $45 if you happen to get one. Or you could spend, if you don't have off-street parking where you live, you can spend $25 and come see the clerk and get a parking permit for the season, which allows you to park in any of our municipal lots. And it's a good idea. And even if you do do it, you still have to move your car at 9:00 AM because we also have to plow those lots afterwards. So, did you wanna add something?
Yeah, except you can't park in the parking lot right here.
Yes. Heads up, winter parking ordinance.
I'm pretty lost.
All right, winter parking ordinance coming up. Probably no one in the village who uses village water and sewer has yet to receive their September water bill. And then a lot of people are starting to wonder what's going on. Well, as of September, that billing period, it is being administered by the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. And they have encountered some glitches in their...
Records.
In their, in our, in our system, addresses, matching meters, et cetera. They need to get everything entered into their system. So they have been, they're late, obviously. The last thing we heard, the last information we had is that they were going out on October 5th, 15th, which was yesterday. So look for them, they should be coming soon. Don't worry, you are gonna get to pay for all that water and sewer in the last quarter. Because I know you're worried that you're not gonna get to. But it's coming. Look for it. I'm not quite sure what the due date will be, presumably about 30 days after when they went out. So one question I've asked the authority, and I think some bumps in the handoff are understandable and unavoidable. Says, "So if they, if people don't get them till October 20th, then we're not gonna send out the next one December 1st, correct?" Correct. So what's gonna happen is they're gonna be a little bit staggered and eventually they will move up and get on that proper sequence of March 1st, June 1st, September 1st, December 1st. So that's what's happening with the water bills. If you're upset about any of that, which you may be, because you wanna pay your bill, there are still many folks who sort of either haven't heard that the water authority is doing it or don't know how to get ahold of them. And the clerk and I are getting a lot of calls on any issue from bills to water main breaks. And what we are going to do, and we can save the troubles, we're gonna say, "You need to call the water authority because they are managing your water and sewer now." Yours, mine, ours. They sent out a mailing over the summer which had the numbers, but if you misplaced that or something, go to the Village of Tivoli website, you go to the main menu on the homepage and it's, it's a blue field and there are a number of categories. There's one that says water and sewer. Scroll down over that and it'll pop up all the contact information for the Water and Wastewater Authority. So that's who you're gonna call. If you wanna say, "Where's my bill?" Or, "There's a water main break in front of my house." Or, "Gee, you guys are doing a great job." There are three numbers there.
Or the water's brown.
Or the water's brown or anything else. Call them, that's where the numbers are. And while you're there, on the homepage of the village website, if you haven't already, take advantage of a new feature that we put on there, which is a little below that menu. You will see a place to enter your email, your name and email, and you will be automatically added to the village email list, which is one of the best ways to know what's happening in the village. For example, the community potluck on Friday today, I did a blast to that. We've got 251 people on that list now. It's very easy, just enter your email and, you know, you will get all our updates on, you know, what's going on. And whenever there's something going on that's important, I do use that. So please sign up. And also, still on water, for a number of weeks, there's been running water on Pine Street near the bus stop. That is being repaired tomorrow. That is an old valve that is no longer made. It's a long story. They have to install another valve in order to just isolate that area and then fix the valve that is a problem. All that work is gonna happen tomorrow. Pine Street's gonna be closed to through traffic tomorrow. And hopefully it'll get done in one day. So I don't know if you'll see this on Panda in time to know that, but we are also doing other notifications. So Pine Street closed tomorrow. That's all I have. Is there anything else from the board before we open to public comments? Okay. I'll just add one more thing, which is, you know, Halloween's coming up, please be safe. If you're trick-or-treating, be safe. If you're driving, be safe. Be smart, watch out for trick-or-treaters. And if the ghosts and goblins are too rowdy, particularly very late at night, we are served by the Dutchess County Sheriff's Office. And if there are goblins outside your house, you can always call the deputies, 486-3800. With that.
I have one more thing.
Yes.
Bags of garbage.
Yes.
Please don't put your garbage out in a bag on the street. Please put it in a can. Because dogs, raccoons, possums, everybody is ripping into them every week and it's a mess.
It's true, it's been happening a lot.
It's been happening a lot, so.
Yeah. With that, we'd like to open the floor to public comment on any topic.
You want me to update down grants?
That would be great.
Well, last month, I talked to yous about that we put in an AFG grant for a hundred and something thousand, what was it, 119,000, 120,000, whatever it was. We didn't get that full grant, but we did get $68,000 to buy 10 brand Scott air packs or whatever brand of air packs. So with that, the fire company will pay the 5% up tick for that and to bring it, they gave us 64,000 to bring it to 68,000. We're putting in the $32,000 to purchase the air packs.
Air packs.
So that we have 10 units. That's far, that's what's going with that. I mean, we've been trying to get a system that puts air into the Scott air packs, but we keep getting turned down on it for some reason.
How much is a system like that? How much does that cost, that system?
Turn around, 30,000, 35,000 for that.
So now you have to send them out to get them refilled?
Well, we'll have to call mutual aid to fill them until we get something established.
Otherwise, you gotta go back and get to that cascade system, whatever. How do you know if they can do?
They might not even get to do it with the new ones.
With the new ones.
It still leaves us short, about six packs. But we're working on a plan for that, so.
Great. Well, congratulations on the grant. Thank you. That's taxpayer money that's not going towards that stuff from village taxes.
And we're working on a couple other micro grants right now to update Drawzalife and stuff like that. So hopefully hear from them soon.
Are those grants, state grants, federal grants?
There's some private grants that we've, you know, been, you know, basically told about, that we've submitted stuff for. I mean, our Drawzalife's 20 years old now. About 20 years old. So there is need for update. They have difficulty cutting the new metals in the new cars, but you're talking $70,000 upgrade. So some of these micro grants, we could buy half of them now, go for another grant on your cell and supplement. So that's what we're trying to do now.
We did get a matching grant from...
D E C.
D E C.
For hose, a hose.
So it was 1,500. So we have to put 1,500 up and they gave us 1,500, so it's $2,000 worth of, I believe it's old.
Hose, yeah. We did, we upgraded some of the hose, some of the hose on that truck, although it passes is coiled. So we updated, we were able to put in the D E C grant and update hose. So it'll be all brand new hoses and crosslays on, on the new rig that comes, as well as the truck that's already there.
Since we have one of the directors, Tommy Chrissy, and the chief, Mark Keltbrand here, you wanna talk about your new digs and how they're working out and...
Yeah, so the temporary building's up, it's running. We should have heat met hopefully very soon. We're working on that. We're trying to seal it up, there's water that...
You've had water coming in.
Gets in there. But it's, it's housing the vehicles, it's keeping, we're able to...
Keeping locked up.
Keeping locked up. We can still run, you know, all our calls. It's keeping everything secure, which is good. And it's gonna work. It'll work till that building gets rebuilt and we can get back in there. Just trying to get everything organized. We still have a lot of stuff that's out in storage, out being cleaned. So there's stuff all over the place, but we're fully operational.
Yes.
We're on every single call and then some, so.
There's gonna be a lot of work when they, even when they start working on the building. That building's gotta be clean, top to bottom. We were just at classes on contamination and that building is loaded with it right now.
From the fire.
Yeah, there's a big push on cancer for firefighters. And we took, we actually drilled on it and classed on it from the state a couple weeks ago. And there's a big push on that with contamination, cleaning gear, drying gear properly, so. Yeah, I mean, but that's all in that contract, you know, and everything for the rebuild, to have that all wiped down and cleaned and so.
Great. We're gonna, we're gonna do it right.
Except people in Tivoli, they figured out that they don't park there because the...
Most of them, we had them moved, those are just county sheriff last Monday. For the most part, they're all, they're all pretty good.
And across the street.
Yeah, we've been, it's been great. Hopefully work starts at the old firehouse soon and we'll be, just keep rocking rolling. We're working on the specs on the truck, the ambulance replacements. We'll have that answered pretty soon and we should be in pretty good shape.
Great.
I was in Costco today.
Yes, you gotta come address that propane tank.
Today, it'll be there tomorrow to take care of it.
Great.
I worked in there. Say hey.
We sent the right guy.
That was it.
We sent the right guy to get the hills. So thank, thank you.
Other than that, just waiting for the building.
All right. Any other comments from the public on any topic?
Any thoughts about the house across the street?
Straight across? I'd need to get you an update on that. I mean, obviously, it's like posted and posted and posted and posted.
You guys had due diligence on paperwork.
Yeah, yeah. So I know the code enforcement officer is aware and he's used up a bunch of rolls of tape and a bunch of reams of paper posting the house.
That's all I'm gonna pay.
Yeah, so let me, let me find out what the latest is on that and get back to you because obviously...
Smell of fuel's crazy.
It is, it's like falling over, for sure. Top's coming off, bottom's caving in, and it's really been neglected, so we'll find out.
That it gets on Panda, maybe somebody will listen. People pens and stop school buses in this village. It's, it's an ongoing thing. If they haven't noticed, now the sheriff's following the bus. So maybe it'll stop, but in the afternoon, the sheriff's not behind the bus. And a couple of the occasions that they passed the bus was in the afternoon.
That's amazing.
It's, it's, I'm out there, I'm getting my granddaughter's on and off the bus. And I'll tell ya, I got a picture of one of the cars with license plate and everything that went by. I called Rettrop PD and they got, that got absolutely nowhere. Never got a return call or nothing. I told the sheriff about it, okay, and he's aware of that stuff, about the car and everything else. I don't know how you...
Morning, afternoon, all of it.
Both. Hey, retarded time is in the afternoon. In the morning, there's people, I mean, I'm sure they go down Broadway and they do it everywhere else, but on Montgomery Street, if you're out there putting kids on the bus, they're flying to college, they're flying to the school, they're flying to work. There's nobody going about 30 miles an hour. I mean, they're just cruising right along. And I'm tired of yelling, slow down.
Can you get the bus, bus garage, maybe when they stop, park the bus right in the middle of the road? Should not, I mean, if you park that bus in the middle of the road, you're, you're gonna have to have a tough time getting around it.
Yeah.
Maybe that's the option.
Certainly talk to them and ask about it.
Yeah, because they try to stay over.
There are a number of buses, two isn't just one. It's a little...
There's a lot of them. I've heard, and I talked to the sheriff, the first day I saw him doing it, he said they're passing them on Broadway, they're passing them all over the place. I said, "This is nuts."
Everywhere.
It's, it's all over, all the roads and it's just that everybody's in a hurry to get to work, to get to school and, you know, I feel sorry for the person that hit somebody because there's no good issue.
For sure.
So I just want you guys to worry about it.
Yeah, thanks for letting me know. I'll definitely do some follow-up on that with different entities, for sure.
Yep. And I know that the state police do a fantastic job at the Four Corners.
They've been around.
22 tickets in one day and 18 tickets the next time they were there. I mean, they do a fantastic job.
Yeah. Mike?
With the municipal lot being taken up right now, the temporary structure, if the firehouse isn't worked on by like winter or whatever, not saying, but I hope it does get worked on, but is it okay to just park across the street in that driveway?
So we expect work to be starting on that.
Oh, surely.
Within two weeks.
Oh, cool. That's nice. So that's enough.
So I guess that settles that question, right? But for the time being, on the north side of the street where it's striped, we're not enforcing that parking zone where...
Yeah, but I'm thinking about November 15th until April 1st parking.
Right, right. Well, I'm sure by then they're gonna be working until they'll...
Right.
...equipment there, so unfortunately no, but...
I'll be parking here.
Great. I don't think I have one.
Parking's intense.
Somebody's parking a lot, they're like...
Thank you, Tony.
That's true.
Yeah.
I think it's still locked, isn't it?
No. It's not locked.
They never lock that roof.
All right. Last call for public comment. Thank you for coming. Anything else? We're here every month, it's always nice to have you. Trustees, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move. Can we, can we adjourn and wish the, you know, to turn your happy birthday?
I think so. Is there a second?
Second.
Do we agree that we're gonna adjourn and wish council, happy birthday?
Happy birthday.
All right, it's 7:15. All in favor?
Aye.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Chris. Happy birthday to you. All right. So that was outside the minutes.